Thank you for joining us, folks. Next item on the agenda is general public comment on non-agenda items.
May I first make a motion to amend the agenda? Number seven for second reading on ordinance to regulate vehicle noise to amend the agenda to say first reading on ordinance to regulate vehicle noise.
Motion to amend the agenda.
Aye.
Second, I'm Mike. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
So the seven is amended to initial read. Mr. Mayor, suggest we amend number eight for discussion vote. The council's ready for that at that time. Set some up to act.
Second.
Oh, I'll make that motion.
All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody else? Any other changes to the agenda? We're good? Alright, so let's move on with the public comment. If you have a public comment, just please come to the table and state your name. Anyone have anything that you'd like to share? Zach?
Uh, maybe next time.
Alright, no comment. We'll move on to item number three, which is, I'm sorry, item number four, which is the weed harvesting program. Steve Cushing, Steve, how are you?
Good.
You? Good. Thanks for joining us.
Yeah. We do have an annual report, which I'm not sure if anyone's seen it. I furnished it for the city of the year, but I'll just give you guys a copy of it. You might need to submit as I'm speaking. I'll refer to some information.
Here from Mayor, I can say.
Yeah, I've got more. If anyone else would like to look at the report, I'm going to hear. Steve, go ahead again. I just have to run upstairs for one second. But, did you say you didn't want to call them? Alright. Should we wait for Tim or... Not for long. Okay. So, most people know my name, Steve Cushing, and I'm on the board of the St. Albans Area Watershed Association. And I've been coordinating weed harvesting on St. Albans Bay for 17 years now. And we, the first two years of weed harvesting, we contracted the service through Aquatic Control Technology in Massachusetts. And that cost us approximately $30,000 a year for them to come up and run a weed harvester. And we had to have volunteers and pay for a tractor and wind them to haul the weeds away to the composting site. In 2008, we had the opportunity to purchase a weed harvester out of West Virginia for $35,000, which included the weed harvester trailer that it comes on. And that trailer also transports weeds. It can, once we've launched the weed harvester, it can be converted into a way of transporting the weeds and offloading the weeds. It has its own hydraulics on it. There was a steel mesh conveyor. So we started operating that and reduced our, and purchased another weed harvester from the town of St. Albans used to own, that they sold to the town of Franklin. And the town of Franklin had a new one in 2015, and they sold that to us for $2,000. And we just thought we shouldn't let the weed in the neighborhood. It was too hard. We had to put some money into about $10,000 and build a new trailer for it. But we were able to, not only to operate it, but take it all this way. We, the big one that has a capacity of 420 bushels and the small one has a capacity of 200 bushels. So that sometimes when we're in areas where there's less weeds, it pays to be operating two because it takes, you know, you may only be getting three loads a day or something like that. In areas where it's very, very heavy, as I hand down on the last page of it, there's a map. And in those areas where it's rarely heavy, we'll be getting 15 loads a day just with a large harvester. And as fast as we can offload and transport the weeds to the compost site, we'll be back, he has another load. So it doesn't pay to be operating two. We just don't have the capacity to transport those weeds. Our annual budget is about $25,000 now, which is less than what we could have in two machines when we were paying back in 2005 for Aquatic Control Technologies. So I think we're really getting a big bang for our buck. Let's see. I'd really like to thank the city of St. Albans for their contribution to this. It was $10,000. We also get $7,500 from the town of St. Albans and $2,500 from the town of Georgia. And usually we get a grant from the state of Vermont through the Aquatic Nuclease Control Grants of about $4,500. So, I mean, we're really fortunate that we've had this steady funding over all these years. I'm not sure if there's been another body of water on Lake Champlain where we've actually gone this long, you know, each year successive years of weed harvesting. And we're, we think we're seeing some results. And one of the things that I really wanted to, I've been trying to get in front of the council for a few months now, and it just somehow it hasn't worked out, but I finally went on the agenda. But recently we've heard some, you know, every year we have to defend weed harvesting. And we'll get people on the long shore that say we're dumping weeds outside of the bay and they're drifting around and, you know, other things. And recently, you know, there were some remarks about the negatives of weed harvesting and maybe there's alternative measures other than using mechanical weed harvesters. And so it's a good opportunity to just defend or just talk about the positives of weed harvesting and try to, you know, dispel some of these myths that are going around about how detrimental weed harvesting may be to various things. Anyways, one of the things that people talk about is the drift of weeds that may be coming from weed harvesting. And, you know, they talked about the weeds that end up over washing on the shore of Lappin Bay or further down the long shore, that some people attribute that to the weed harvesters. And that's, it's just not plausible. You know, for those weeds to drift around, they have to go all the way out around Ball Island and then come north again. They're not going to flow through those between, like, Kill Care and Mosquito Island or Mosquito Island and Burton, because if you go there, the current is actually flowing south. And if we're getting those kind of drifts with the prevailing winds coming out of the south, you would expect to see weeds washing up on the south-facing shore of Hathaway Point or out of Kill Care. They rarely have weeds that they have to rake off the shoreline. So these weeds aren't, you know, flowing out of St. Albans Bay. And these weed harvesters, they, you know, because the way they work, they cut swaths through the weeds and pretty much, I'm not going to say 100%, but the majority of those weeds go into the top of the weed harvester and then into the trailer. Some people talk about the fracturing of the weeds and that we're spreading weeds around. And I suppose to a certain extent there is some fracturing going on, but I think it's just as much fracturing if you've been, after the wheat had no LCI, you're going to see a lot of weeds, you know, washing up on shore from bolt propellers going through these weed beds. And we're not seeing it over all these years of actually harvesting that the areas of infestation have gotten large or that they've gone to other areas in the bay. It's just not happening. But what we're seeing now is that where we, our weed harvesting, it's more concentrated in definite areas. You know, one of those could be like, I'll just pull this map up, but Mill River comes out and then north of Mill River and along Farron Road and then Bingham Shore Road. That's one of the areas where we spend probably the majority of our time weed harvesting. And I was just adding up some figures this year. For this year, and in the first, up until August 11th, we had harvested, what is my number here? We had harvested approximately about 22,000 tons of weeds. You know, it's, you know, like, at first I'd go, these figures can't be right, but... Another people had pointed out that it may disturb the fish habitat. And our mechanical weed harvesting, we're the only body of water where we have a delayed start date till July 15th because just for that factor is that they don't want us to disturb these weed beds where the smaller fish are hiding from predator fish. And on a short-term basis, yeah, we probably do disturb the, wherever we are in small old areas, we probably do disturb the fish habitat. My neighbor who works for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, he said that, you know, when you're fishing bass, if you can go down into those weed beds, he said, you know, the bass are hiding underneath that canopy of it. And so we do disturb it, but he said over the long run, we're not really, you know, hurting the fishery in St. Albans Bay. So, and then one of the things that some people say is there's alternatives to make mechanical weed harvesting, which there is. But one of the suggestions was hand pulling. And they hand pull, and they use an example of Lake George where they hand pull. And Lake George is a different kind of body of water. It's larger, but they have small pockets in these little bays of Eurasian milk oil. So they hired, I think it was 28 divers to work over the summer and go to each one of these areas and they, they hand teched it. And they, they came up with, which I thought was a pretty impressive number, of 93 tons of weeds over, over the 2020-some season. But, but the cost of that was $508,000, a little over half a million dollars to get that 93 tons of weeds. We spent $25,000. And last year, we had 2,794 tons of weeds for $25,000. So, I think it's, it's pretty impressive, but how this is, this whole program has evolved.
What was the amount of weed you took? As you said, you, you took up, how many thousand?
2,794 tons. And I used the figure, we calculated by each weed harvester has a certain capacity, so many bushels. And the EH420, which is an Aquarius system, they say every load it can carry 10,000 pounds. We calculated it at 420. And then if you look at how much a bushel of various things, they don't say a bushel of weeds, but they'll say like, a bushel of corn weighs about more than 60 pounds. And other bushels, you know, that's the weight of them. We, I just used the figure 60 pounds per bushel for the weeds. Checking my fingers, Tom. So I, I just, does anyone have any questions?
So how many other are you, Steve?
Working?
Yeah.
Well, I'm just the coordinator of the volunteer. We have Andy Pelletier, who's the daily coordinator of it. And then we have one other operator and Gary Ferbento, who's been with us now three years. And so it's a two-man operation, too. And, you know, part of our expenses, you know, our payroll is, you know, $14,000 to $15,000 a year. And then the rest of the amounts is, you know, we have to pay quite a sizable amount in workman's comp insurance, liability insurance, and so that.
Sure.
And plus maintenance. And we should be fortunate, over the last couple of years, our maintenance costs have been, you know, negligible compared to one year ago. We had maintenance costs of well over $10,000.
But what happened if you stopped?
I don't know. I'm not sure. I, I hate to, but, you know, I, I'm not sure. And we, you know, we talked earlier about, is there, okay, no question, mentioning two of, can you pinpoint or just sort of put, you know, like, what happens when the ice goes on the day early and then leaves late or something like that? Or what the lake levels are over the winter and stuff? And we expected like, last, maybe it happened last winter, you know, the lake level was low all winter. The ice went out early, but it still stayed low. And we didn't have a lot of turbidity during the spring. We didn't have a lot of rains and runoff. So I was, I wasn't sure what would happen. And we're just, you know, like, in the areas, like, again, that period where we concentrate is heavy. When we got over towards Black Bridge and these areas, you know, we were getting, over here, we were getting 15 loads a day, and then we started getting like six loads a day over in that area. And then we went down to Hathaway Point in that little area by the full launch, and then in Hathaway Point, and we were only getting, you know, three loads a day. And then sometimes, you know, you'll see it a lot heavier in that. And this year, we didn't see it.
Steve, before I open this up, I thought I'd see some type of reduction over the years.
Yeah.
But the way this reads, there's no consistency whatsoever. It's just up and down, up and down.
Yeah.
Does that go to the point you just made relative to rain, maybe runoff, that plays a role in that? Out like us, on the quorum, we've seen a reduction just naturally. But I think as to where do the zebra mussels fit into this discussion?
We expected the zebra mussels somehow may knock it back. I don't know how that mechanism might work. You know, plenty of suggestions, but they actually, the zebra mussels attach themselves to Eurasian milk oil and then... But we're seeing the heaviest weed growth, it's the areas of the heaviest sedimentation in the bay.
And that's Norwood?
That's Norwood, yeah.
And not Lyford Creek?
Well, you'd think it, because of the outflows, that there's a lot of sediments in there. And we're not, we didn't see it as heavy. There were, there were a few years where, I can't remember what year it was, where that weed harvester would go into the weed beds just at the, where, you know, where there's Black Bridge, just down south of Littleways. And it would go into those weeds that were all pressed in on the surface. And he had to stop and would back up because the mass was so great that it would just, you know, bog up the conveyor coming up. You just couldn't take that massive weeds up. So you had to go in and out. And we were getting loads, just one one after another. And got it cleaned up, cleaned up pretty good. It took a week, but...
Is that not the case now?
It's not the case now, no. Another thing we've noticed about weed harvesting, the real positive is, is when we can reduce that weed mass, you know, that where it comes out, you'll see a redness on top of the water where it's, you know, some of the seeds and the flowers, whatever it does. That we can get that out of the way, you improve wave action. And in prior years, we had, you know, this drift of weeds that gets up on the shore and it was, you know, coming off the shore out 15 feet or more. And you'd get into it and you'd be centrally from your shoulders down to the bottom in weeds. And we would go in as close as we could, just keep loading them up and then get into the lake with the pitchforks and just feed these masses of weeds onto the, onto the weed harvester. But the benefit of it was, you know, you'd see these weeds and they're starting to decompose and smell and, you know, it, when you start having all that decomposition going on, the jacks in the water temperature up, you're going to get algae blooms. And when we get that stuff out of the way, you know, you can just immediately see the wave action take over, just the circulation, and it knocked these algae blooms down. It's interesting, but what knocks it, like, this summer, we've had two incidents of algae blooms. And as soon as the wind kicked back up like out of the south one time, and then it came out of like the northeast, it just shut it down. And it, because it causes circulation and the water, moving water from below up to the surface with the wave action, and it just locks up algae bloom down. So the more weeds we get out of the way, it just promotes that circulation of water so much more.
Any other questions for Steve?
No.
Have you explored or considered at all equalizing the contributions amongst the three communities?
I can ask. I'll bring it up.
I understand the art of possible and the different dynamics, things can be... I'm struck that, you know, we've been at 10 for many years now, right? Were we the last one in, the little ones in first?
Yeah. But I'm trying to think back how we, with just the seven and a half and the two and a half in Georgia, we were getting, the reason we bought the weed harvesters is because we started off in the state of Vermont, their contributions were way up, it's much more. And they started to reduce it. And so we said, if we want to keep doing this, we've got to find a way of doing it that's cost-effective. And so we, we got some sizable contributions, particularly from two different donors that enabled us to purchase that weed harvester out of West Virginia.
Yeah, you would think, being that we're this second-largest community by population, who would be paying less.
Well, I'm so...
But we also, we're also a big contributor to, to the bay as well. So, I mean, I advocate that. I'd now, even more, if I could also convince people to do it, but I don't...
I wouldn't try to walk like from my 10, I was just saying, maybe we ought to equalize, Steve, there's nobody who knows how hard it is to get money out of surrounding communities on regional alliances, so.
I agree with Donna. I think we should stay with the 10. Like, it's my first go around for this. But we should ask Steve if he'll approach the town, what it might be worth. Because they are, they're now the biggest town and they are on the lake. And we're not, we're the way of a steak in the lake. I'm sure he will.
Anything else, Steve?
I think right there.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Ray, I appreciate it. Item number five, consider approval of extraterritorial allocation for Fox 61 Lower Newton Road owned by Norm Stanslos. So everyone has an application before you. Norm is not here tonight or is irrepresentative.
Yeah, I don't think we've really had a lot of people showing up, just taking the city's recommendation on whether or not we have the allocation.
So the staff supports the application and granting the allocation with customary conditions. We asked the council to consider an additional condition that the approval be recorded on the end records. The city staff can make sure that.
So who?
Second.
Any other questions or comments? Should that be reflected on the application? That that's the rule we're going to be going?
Yeah, we'll send that back in the cover letter that captures the conditions.
Okay, so we are voting just on the allocation for Norm Stanslos. Any other questions? Hearing all those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition? Hearing none, the allocation is approved for Norm Stanslos. Next on the agenda is the same item for Brigham Road discussion or development, with the developer being Mike Doolan.
Motion to approve based on a positive recommendation from the staff.
Staff offers that recommendation with the same condition as before.
I have a motion, you're second.
I'll second that. And just a query, Captain Hawkins, did you, you meant to include in your motion the same condition or other preparation?
Yes. I, I want to just say at this point in time, we're going to do that for every single application I'm proposing. Thank you.
That's like the plan. So we have a motion in the second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing done, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, hearing none, the allocation for Mike Doolan for Brigham Road has been approved.
Oh, can I, I just wanted to point out that I have represented Mike Doolan in the past. I don't know if I'm doing this, but my vote would be necessary, probably would have the form requirement for this vote. So unless people think I need to...
I personally find... I should bring that to our attention, Mike, for 10. Item number seven is the initial reading of the ordinance to regulate vehicle noise. In your pocket, you had the updated vehicle noise ordinance.
So we have, if you recall, in the agenda to stay at first reading, the action item tonight is to accept the ordinance if you're ready and advance second reading. We made a series of adjustments that responded to the concerns that were voiced at the last council meeting. A good one was around mufflers. There was a section C, I don't know if it's been stripped. And we also added language around enforcement to make it clear that it'll be a civil ordinance enforced via the judiciary bureau and our traffic ordinance. And we have removed a provision under section three related to honking of horns.
Any questions or doubt? Not sure if anyone was downtown on Saturday, but there were a few examples of why this will prove to be valuable.
There was just one here a few minutes ago. Yeah. So we're just going to move on, or nothing, we'll move on to the second reading.
Usually we have a... Usually we have a consent at both ways, but I usually have a vote at first reading to say, yeah, we're good, let's move to second, which directs the staff to publish it in the papers.
We have a motion from that effect.
Yeah, I'll move that we moved the vehicle noise ordinance as presented this evening on the second reading.
Second. Second by Bob. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. And I would just say, I know we're threading the needle, this is a bit tough, I really appreciate, Dom, your patience, as several of us have tried to make this something that will work and address the concerns, but also we've learned for people to do some of the things that they want to do that are unpleasant for others. It's, these quality of life issues are just really tough and I know you've been engaged in them for years, so thanks for all of the work and you and your staff on this.
You approve that, right?
Yep.
I had someone mention to me over the weekend, Dom, that is there a, just make that clear, but is there an instrument similar to the, the speed sign, which shows what the speed is? Is there something in terms of shows the decibels of noise?
Yeah.
Just a, I don't know if there's something out there, Dom, but that was a suggestion that one resident made to me. Is there something that could sort of recognize or point out to individuals what, you know, as we found out would be quite a bright sign, some would probably just turn it up or rather louder than they have it. But I think a lot of times it may be just recognizing where they're at relative to the expectation that they'd be responding.
Yeah, yeah. I haven't seen that worth looking at. The only ones I've seen are the measuring, you know, on a micro, on a display device.
I told the individual I would share it, so. Moving on to item number eight, which is a presentation of the draft belonging equity inclusion committee. So you'll have that in your packet with some changes already from the last meeting.
So this is a policy document, so it doesn't require the formal first and second reading. You keep working on it until you think it's ready. So we had a draft last night, that last time, we got some good input from my area, others took that input and presented a second draft. The signature change is pivot from diversity, equity, and inclusion to belonging equity and inclusion. And I think the bulk of it survives, nearly as presented as it might very much from right.
Any questions or comments for Dom?
I have a comment. Last, I think, I spoke last month about I didn't like paragraph two and paragraph three, I thought they were too negative. And I think in the minutes of August meeting, my comments were completely reflected, so I'm not going to repeat them. And I also said I would vote for the, I think the general tendency and the general meaning and intent of this policy is excellent, so I'll vote for it. But I do have some reservations about paragraph two and paragraph three, but I'm going to vote for it. Just to reiterate by means of the August minutes, I think it's too negative, but I'm going to vote for it because the general policy is excellent.
Is that something we want to, do you want to have that time to talk about? Or do we want to move this forward?
I'm certainly glad to keep working on it. I, the council is inclined, I think, you know, this, this business that we're all engaged getting involved along the needle thread, right? My instinct is that removal of that, those paragraphs or rewording them might cause other folks to get more uncomfortable in the other direction. That might, my, I feel a sense of, I feel a bit of a sense, there is a timeliness to this work, right? And I think what's important is the overall charge, putting the ball to play.
From my point of view, I accept that. I don't like the second and third paragraphs, but they are almost surplusage for introductory remarks. I would prefer they're not there, but as I said, beginning to this end, the city council hereby creates, it's fine and I'm going to vote for it. So I don't, I'm not going to make an issue of, let's go back and revise it. So I'm content with taking a vote tonight.
Thank you, Bob. Any other comments?
I'll approve the comments. Same concerns.
Yeah, I guess I'll just say I support this, I really appreciate the councils, you know, having had the thoughtful discussion that we had last time regarding some of this language and wording. I think the committee itself and the feedback that we get once we establish it will be an opportunity for us to all do some learning. So, yeah, I wholeheartedly support the proposal and I'm really glad that we're, you know, inviting more people in our community and making an intentional effort to have people who aren't always represented in elected office or in our positions of power to advise us on the ways that we can be more welcoming and open to all people who are in our community. And I think that's what the folks who had, you know, my constituents, our constituents who asked us to look at these issues, asked us to do. I know it's taken us a lot of work to get here and there's a lot more work to do. So, yeah, I'm glad, I'm excited to move this forward and work on getting the committee to win.
Okay. Anything else? Tell me your good. Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the draft of belonging equity inclusion committee as presented.
Move.
Motion by Mike. Second. Second by Bob. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone votes, motion passes. Thank you. My only comment, I don't, I don't, I probably don't want to single you out, Bob, but I'm just wondering if your concerns could have been addressed earlier in the week, where we turned a different draft out, if need be. And I know timing is sometimes difficult, a lot of time to get it back in and changing, but.
I mean, they were verbalized last meeting, you know, and I'm going to display pride of authorship here, right? If there's, you like, you've got four votes to take it out, that's fine, I'm good with that, you know?
No, I'm understanding the future.
The item came out on Friday, right? And.
I'm just comparing it to the noise ordinance where Chad, Chad made his input prior to the.
Well, I made input, but it was negative input, I guess, in a way. So you're right in a way, generally, I could have contacted Dom or you.
And I haven't, once again, I don't.
One month's window.
I don't mean to single you out, Bob, but I'm just saying, before we get to this point and we have this discussion, maybe we just keep this in mind and if they have an issue, maybe just address it, address it before.
Well, you know, there was so much discussion at that meeting, it's hard to keep track of the weight of things, right? When you're trying to figure out where you get to the next level, so I'm not misreading. Looked felt stronger about certain sections.
Yeah, and I'll just say for my part and reiterate my comments from the last month's meeting, which is that I feel like it's important for us to have a preamble that talks about why we're doing what we're doing, especially in this particular instance. And, you know, I, I think the fact that we're acknowledging the biases that exist is an important part of doing some of the work that we need to do. So there was a disagreement and a tension on the council last time that maybe it wasn't the clearest direction to Dom and staff on exactly what we wanted presented.
Okay, we'll move on. Thanks, Bob, thanks.
Glad I had a hand up there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Could we be a public comment on that?
Yep.
I just wanted to say, I wanted to thank the council for having my discussions about it. I think it was really nice that they were, I'm glad that it's in public along, along the same lines as Dominic, so that was nice as well. But I do, I do just want to say thank you guys for that and thank you for taking feedback and listening to things. I did, I did notice that some of the words that did, were pointed out as negative did seem to be removed a little bit. It seemed to be more intersected in words, so I thought that was like really nice. I thought it was actually a great way to frame it as, and it didn't seem that negative in terms of large reaction, which I think is a valid concern, you know, if it's a concern. So, but yeah, thank you guys so much for that, I just really appreciate it. I just want to say that, you know, it was the twentieth anniversary of nine eleven and my nine eleven story is a little different in that I was a freshman in college, I was growing on a beard, I was, there was a gas scare and so I was in my little tiny town of International Falls and I was filling up my gas tank and a guy started yelling at me, slurs for an Arab person, and he eventually came over and started punching the window of my car and I drove away and got away and I told my mom and then, as happens in small towns, it got around, right? And so the next day I had like flowers sent to me and I got a letter, a woman came over and had bailed out her boat the previous summer and she came over and like, thank you for that and said, you know, you're welcome. And I got all these nice, nice things that told me I belonged to this community and while, you know, it wasn't the kind of thing that everyone would have gotten, right? Like if, if I wasn't living there for as long as I was or if I wasn't, you know, there are various reasons why I got the reception I did and I got the response I did, but that's the kind of thing you like to see in a small town, is that idea that like we're all in this together, we're all working for like a common goal and we all support each other, like regardless of who we are. And so I just think this is like such a great initiative and a great thing and I think it'll really push, push forward the idea that like, St. Albans is a great place to live, it's a wonderful main street, it's a cute community and it's the kind of place that, you know, we want more people to come and experience and enjoy. So, thank you so much, I just really appreciate it.
Welcome.
Thank you, Brad. No, Zach, I gave you a chance earlier.
Three strikes, three chances. No, I really just wanted to echo Briar's statement and I really appreciate y'all voting on this, as you did. It means a lot and, and I just want to thank each of you for your time and your votes. I appreciate it.
You know, my take on it is, we don't know everything. We don't, you know, I don't know, I don't know traditions in terms of different religious sectors or populations and I'm embarrassed to say that sometimes people have to bring that to our attention and see how we can work together moving forward. You know, I think, I think there's great opportunity with, with the right advisory committee to really focus on different tradition celebrations, to really, to have people feel like they belong in St. Albans because we are celebrating a different aspect of their heritage or whatever the case may be. So I think for, I think as a, as a council, it can be very educational to all learn from it. So I think none of the council of the city can definitely benefit from, from something of this nature. But thank you guys, thanks for being here. So we'll move on to second, of adoption of amendments to land development regulations and that would be Mr. Keith Sawyer.
Thank you very much.
Everyone okay?
All too well. Let's see, let's do state housing legislation, so, you know, real quick, we really can't do anything in our local zone that's not specific and enabled by state law. And state law gets very specific on some things we can and can't do in certain cases. And there's been a lot of that with housing lately over the past couple decades. And they did make some updates over the past couple years in the state house, had to do with some things that basically changed the lay of land and in order to make our local regs compliant with, with the state legal laws, we just have to pass some amendments. And they will have some changes on how we regulate these aspects of housing, but in general, once the state law changes, it supersedes whatever's in our regs anyway. There was, there's a piece in the statute that says our rules are supposed to be compliant with state rules. And so we kind of have to make this change. But we did use this opportunity to clarify some things and also give some constructive direction within, within the bounds we're given to, to make sure that, it actually deals with some things that have occurred over time or things that we, where we're like, oh, the next time we do this, we want to make sure we're thinking of that, that sort of thing. So we did take that opportunity. But overall, in the existing rule that anyone can add an accessory dwelling unit to a single family home as permanent use, no matter what, one of the main changes was that, that ADU can be at least as large as nine hundred square feet, no matter what. So we, we put that change in. It also says the state really doubled down on, you cannot regulate that property as anything more than a single family home, even though it's a single family home and an accessory dwelling unit. So we put those changes in there too.
Do they, do these buildings still need to comply with setbacks?
Yeah, so actually we put some rules in here that, that verify that. And there are some things that aren't anticipated by the state law that we actually address in these changes. For instance, if I have a garage and it's a certain distance away from my house, it could actually be, be closer to my neighbor than my house can be because it's not considered the principal use. The house is the principal use, the garage is the accessory use. Well, a lot of accessory dwelling units go in garages. Once a residential use goes in that building, that building's now part of the principal use of the law, right? So that garage is now not an accessory use. So we put in here some direction to direct both the zoning administrator and if necessary the DRB to say, be on the lookout for this. Just because someone's allowed to add an accessory dwelling use to their property doesn't mean they can put that use in a structure that would now be non-conforming because it's residential. If a residential structure isn't allowed to be that close to your neighbor, you can put your ADU somewhere on your property, you have that right. But in terms of the structure it goes in, that needs to be in compliance with our setback rules that apply to structures. So it's stuff like that that's not in the state regs, but that we knew might become problems, where we were able to put some direction in. And in fact, that would have been helpful before, that would have been an issue with the existing ADU law, even before the state made these changes. But so that's an example, just to answer your question, then yeah, the setbacks, lot coverages, everything, everything still has to apply, but also we were able to clarify issues like that.
Parking.
Because of the state rule, you're not allowed to require any parking above and beyond what a single family home alone would require. So they, that's one of the things the state actually went the other way on.
What does a single family require?
Under our rules, it is two.
What's up?
Yeah.
So if a single fat family home requires two and you add an accessory dwelling unit and you've only got space for two. and you add an accessory dwelling unit, um, and you've only got space for two, and you add an ADU, and now you have two more, do we have enforcement options?
We can, um, if someone's parking their car where they shouldn't be, because there are too many cars that own that lot, we can enforce based on that. We, uh, if they come to us and say, "Hey, we want to build more parking on this lot because now we have accessory dwelling in it," our rules are very prescriptive on where that additional parking can be. They have to follow the same rules, it's just we can't require any more parking just because they have accessory dwelling in it.
So you can't deny them?
Can't deny, um, we are, we, we have to allow, we have to permit the accessory dwelling unit. But just as with your question in the setbacks and which structure goes in, or the, if they wanna add more parking, they still have to follow all the rules that everyone else has to follow.
So just because you have an ADU, that doesn't allow you to park in the front lawn?
You cannot, do not park in the front lawn.
Do I pay more water and sewer if I have?
You, if you, uh, I believe our allocations are based on bedrooms, so if you add bedrooms, you need to come, you need to go upstairs to Kristen and buy more water and sewer.
But why would I want to be a duplex owner and reduce my house to a single-family with an accessory dwelling like we have in the rules here? Why would I wanna do that then?
I don't think there are many, um, I don't think you're gonna find a lot of situations where a duplex, I think this rule would come into play more, this allowance, where if I have a single-family home and it's got too big for me and I wanna let someone else live there, or I need, if I need to create a space for a family member who needs help and needs to live with me, it's normally single-family homes that are adding ADUs. I think we very rarely see duplexes that say, "Hey, I wanted to evacuate from a duplex to a single-family home with an ADU." Unless that duplex is grandfathered and somehow loses its grandfather status, and that's where we'll say, "Well, you've, you, you've no longer lost your duplex." Say for instance, a building's vacant for a long time. It gets sold. A new owner comes in and says, "Hey, I thought this was a duplex," and we say, "Look, we consistently tell everyone who walks in, it's no longer a duplex." Um, what can I do? Well, you can do a single, you can do an accessory dwelling unit, but you have to commit to living on that property. Once the owner is no longer living at that property, the whole thing is, um, in violation. It can't be an accessory dwelling unit under this special allowance if the owner doesn't live in one of the units.
How do you, how do you enforce a consequence?
Well, luckily, because of the state's education law, we're able to watch the homestead declarations. And if we have an accessory dwelling in a property where no one's declared a homestead, then we follow up and say, "What's going on?" Basically, what we can do is, if it is a violation, we can say, "Look, you, uh, you're in violation. We're gonna start charging you $200 a day, and we're gonna take you to court unless we can somehow, um, fix this issue." Which might mean selling it to someone who is gonna live there. Or breaking down the walls and getting rid of the accessory dwelling.
Would that accessory dwelling be subdivided off?
Typically not. Typically, it's in the house or it's in the garage, and it's not really two separate structures that you can draw a property line in between.
I guess, uh, through our discussions, I guess I was envisioning that a tiny house could be built on, on the property. Is that, is that not the case?
You could bring a tiny house to your property, and if it meets all the other rules about putting a structure like that in your property, that could become the accessory dwelling unit. You could also put a tiny house on a small lot that's vacant and have a single-family home be that tiny house.
Probably get in the way of the rent though, Tim.
I, I just, uh, you know, last meeting, I think Tim and I both shared our frustration with this, uh, this may be a crazy question, but what happened to local control? It, it just, it's just tough to swallow and being mandated from the state that can impact the, this community as well as many others. It's just frustrating that it's sort of being jammed at our throats, but am I wrong, am I wrong in that? I mean, there's no, there's no, there's nothing we can do to change it, is we have to accept it, right?
Yeah. Um, it has, accessory dwelling units have some very fervent, like, fans, and it has some very fervent opponents. And we're not a home rule state. You know, the Mount Hill, you can basically, this is one of those things where they can't tell us exactly how to do the regulation.
Accessory dwelling is what it should've been all along, and it was for someone to take care of their elderly parents. That's what it was all about a long time ago.
Yeah, and they put the global term with mother-in-law part.
Yeah, and we don't use that anymore, but now it's, it's morphed itself into this, into something else where you can have anyone live there as long as you still live on the property. So you can otherwise run a duplex on your property as long as you decide you want to live in the house, no matter how bad that other apartment is, or how unkept it is, as long as it's either 900 square feet or 30% of the size of the primary residence, whichever's greater. That's what the accessory rules, and, um, there's nothing you can do better.
Well, if I could misread anything, so, having been tangentially a part of some of the discussions around this, the amount of pushing density onto communities like us that was being discussed in legislature before advocacy from Chip and,
I mean, that was a nightmare.
and others was much more extreme than this, and this was the result of a lot of conversation. And I think part of, to, to get to your point about there's nothing we can do about it, well, we can't deny the accessory dwelling unit, but we can enforce all of our public health and safety ordinances. We, you know, we've done a good job regardless of the type of property that it is of, you know, asking folks to have, live up to a certain standard quality of life and increase that enforcement pretty effectively in our neighborhoods, and so this particular thing doesn't prevent us from doing any of that good work anymore, but it does take, you know, that, it does make it so that more people can have accessory dwelling units without, um, us considering just that factor. They can't, you know.
Increases the density, increases motor vehicle traffic, increases parking problems, increases, you know, a bunch of things.
There, there are some built-in conflicts there, but our P, our list, our pages of lists of distressed properties that we used to go over when we really started doing the multi-stack, multi-department approach of the pages, so has gone from 10 pages to one. And whether we're talking about single-family homes, duplexes, six-plexes, accessory dwelling units, I know there's some problem properties out there, and there's always gonna be a new problem property, but with the PHSO, we've been able to address many of these issues on all kinds of different properties, regardless of whether or not they're accessory dwelling units. And typically, it typically, um, you get a more receptive response if the owner lives there. In most, in most PHSO cases.
Which is a positive because I'd rather have an owner on-site than an owner off-site.
Yeah.
If there's gonna be two families in one dwelling, so you are right there.
Can any single-family home as it stands today add an apartment within that and consider it, uh, a dwelling?
So you'd have to come in and you'd have to show Dave and Sue and Sarah that, um, this is where I'm gonna put it. This is my proof that the square footage is, uh, if it's more than 900, then it's no more than 30% of the total local square footage. You know, this is the setback of the building is gonna go in. I mean, you've got, they've got to prove that they both comply with the accessory dwelling unit rule as written by the state, but also they comply with all of our other rules that we can, uh, put into play.
But it sort of goes against, it does go against our, our, some of our initiatives to get away from multiple apartments and houses to get back to single-family occupied. Right? I mean,
And it, again, it, it viscerates our conditional use standard, right?
Yeah, you cannot, yeah, it's not a conditional use.
Yeah, so we can't use character of the area affected.
Oh, well, that, that, we're not, we're just getting started. Wait, wait till we can further along the topic.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. So we can't use that, so there's, I mean, there's all, you know, that's, that's a big deal.
Yeah, and then also we can no longer use conditional use on any project that would uh, result in four or less dwellings. Uh, I mean, we can use character of the area. We can use other aspects of conditional use, amount of traffic, um, character of the area's always been one of the, this, character of the area has always been the one that the neighbors who come in, cause it's bringing back some.
That's right.
And, um, but you know, you know, character of the area's also been kind of abused in some cases too. That's what the intent was. There are many people who feel like character of the area's been unfairly used, it's hard to define, it gets kind of subjective, and it's been used to kill projects in the review process, and they decided that if it's four or less, then we'll take that off the table.
I didn't wanna get down on, I know that you're putting these in front of us because the state's requiring you to put them in front of us, and we have to do, we have to, uh, either comply with the state law or be in violation of it, so. But I, I, I just don't like it.
I know, yeah.
And I, I think there's a couple of other people here that don't like it, and, uh, but it is what it is, and I guess what Mike said, we're lucky we got this. We could've got something a lot worse.
Tim, you know what, but it also means that character of the area's a problem for a long time. If there's some aspect of the neighborhood that you can actually quantify, there are form-based codes. There are things that actually better define what the character of the area is, and they are not character of the area. They are actual other standards that you can use in your review. And so you could deny something if we were to go through that exercise of taking this idea of character of the area and actually saying, "In this neighborhood, it's gotta look like this, it's gotta be like that." And, and so the, the state's change would keep us from being able to do that and to say, "If a project comes before us, let me know it's just, it's just not right." If we have some measurable standards that we can use, then we could still use those to deny.
Unfortunately, we won't be able to find those out until the problem has solved.
Yeah, yeah. Are you, are you implying that Chip hasn't figured out what every problem might be by now? I'm good at finding problems.
No, I, just one, a couple last words is that, you know, we, every neighborhood in the city has an apartment house that causes havoc within the neighborhood. I'm looking at Ryan, Chip, is that?
We have a tractor sitting.
I mean, every, every neighborhood has one of those homes, and now we're, we're moving towards steps of having multiple homes, potential to have multiple homes. The only saving grace, I would say, is to Tim's point, the owner has to live there.
Yeah.
And that, that is,
That's huge.
That is, that is a saving grace in a lot, but not in all cases. I'm saying not in all cases, but it's just, you know, we've, we're, we've, we as a city have worked so hard to clean up those apartments, and we all know what they are, and now we're just opening the door for, for having more of them. It's frustrating, um, because we know what the impacts to the neighborhoods are. If you get the wrong property owner and the wrong tenants, it, it, it demoralizes quality of life, so that's why.
Well, I'm gonna cut to the quick here instead of sitting up here and being an enemy on the and I'm gonna move to, um, approve the second reading and consider, uh, or adopt the, um, amendments to land development regulations. That's presented by Chip.
Would you like to amend the motion to say we, 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 uh, carry up a motion in a second? Any other questions for Chip? Any other comments? Anyone in the audience? Greg Ryan?
Uh, so there was something said about not parking in the front yard. Our, their house next to us has a tractor, a big tractor, probably not for a while, it's still like two, three weeks now. They're also doing tons of work.
Calls.
Yeah. All right, we'll go figure it out.
Yeah.
Really? Is it construction?
Yeah, oh no, they've got it the entire time, it's ours. They don't have a front end for it.
Oh, okay, that might be a fun.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, thank you. We will look into that. So can, can we also just look at the service industrial ones?
Oh, yeah.
Do we, do we get this one?
We can vote.
Oh, you didn't vote?
No.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyhow. Hearing none, motion passes. So the second reading for, um, land development regulations. We'll move on to item number 10, which is,
There's a B.
Oh, there's a B, parking in, um,
Service industrial.
Service industrial district.
This one would clarify the ability to park in front of principal buildings in the service industrial districts.
Not near your apartment.
And, um, uh, rug sweep. The, uh, you know, most of our commercial buildings actually have parking in front. The service industrial district is one district that's allowed to look more like big box slash warehouse slash. And it, it would help with fund, because we discovered this ambiguity when we were, um, looking at some of the fund concepts and, and getting in, and eventually going to permitting for them.
Motion to second. With a second reading on the parking in service industrial district.
Second. Motion in a second. Any other questions or comments for Chip?
Any public comment?
Public comment, of course. Hearing none, Bob Giuseppe?
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any one to vote, carrying on, um, regulation passes for parking in service industrial district. Moving on to item number 10, which is also a second reading to consider the adoption of compact car only space at the corner of Main and White Street.
Got some complaints and some, you know, we verified it, but it can be hard to pull out of White Street, onto Main, really either direction, if there's a larger vehicle parked in that space that closes to White Street, so. It's a difficult case of where for sightseeing and safety features, we would recommend that that space be compact car only.
Any questions for Chip on this?
Chip, are these ticket defenses that are gonna cost points on your license, or are these, um, the other ones?
Um, boy, I don't think ours is a few points. I think it's only a fine.
Okay.
Only a fine.
So that would be Paul Tally or whoever, whoever the person is comes around, puts something on there, and it's a, it's just a fine, no points on your license.
It would be Steve Racing.
Okay.
Yeah, parking enforcement.
Okay, any other questions for Chip?
I have another question that has nothing to do with this, and I was gonna mention it under, um, council members' reports, but in terms of the building at 12 Congress Street, when, I've almost been hit a couple of times when you're walking through there, there's no stop sign, and they come out with the parking come off. Is there anything we can do about that?
Uh, once the parking system is finally all installed, um, they will have to wait at the gate there.
They'll have to wait there?
Hold on. Uh, so that, that, I would, I would wait to see if that would improve the situation.
Okay.
And then, you know, of course, if, if we still have issues, then we can take another look at something else too. But I would, you know, 'cause everyone's gonna be able to see, the pedestrian's gonna see the gate come up, the car's gonna be not, you know, gonna be coming from a stop position, so I might maybe be able to save the ones that.
Okay. Okay.
We have a motion on that.
Hearing a motion in a second. For the compact car parking on Main and White. Any other questions? Other comment? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
In opposition?
Aye.
Aye too? In opposition, uh, reading passes. Moving on to item number 11, which is consider the readoption of the BCDP residential anti-displacement and relocation plan.
This is one of those things we have to have on file for BCDP grants. The city council approved it before. I don't think it's changed substantially. And it's basically limited to, only to city actions on something funded by a BCDP grant, and it's following all the same rules we typically have to follow. Such as like what we had to do for the Congressman Grant, we had to make sure that everyone in the old Main Lane Apartments had a place to go before we developed the building, so basically just like that.
Motion to approve the BCDP residential anti-displacement relocation plan. Second.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Mike. Any other questions or comments for Chip? Council, public? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes. I did have one question on that, um, any, we have a number of, the number of people that moved out of the old Main Lane Apartments, and how many of them actually moved back in?
Now, the stand is a success of Chip's anti-displacement policy. It's been relentless, relocated.
Really?
Yeah, and they got six-figure settlements to relocate into nice places than they had it in the board.
They were thinking, you know, many people have come back. They were thinking, uh, many people have come back.
Oh?
Yeah. Like, you know, it's a good question. You should ask, but I, there are a couple of folks. Like, um, I can think of at least two. More than one, more than one. Maybe, maybe three or four. At least two.
Look up the minimalist in the dictionary.
Okay, we're moving on to item number twelve, which is mayor's report. Chip, you should have it.
This is Dom, you want to just see if anyone in the public wants to, this was in your board pack and this was something that we received from uh, Amy Brewer, who's, um, uh, cessation coordinator up at the hospital. And, um, Amy, uh, Amy does, um, a lot of work with, um, butt pickup and the amount of, she's had great success in recruiting volunteers and you can see the amount of cigarette butts, which, um, is amazing how many they picked up in, I'm not sure in the period of time, almost four or five hours. It's just amazing that, uh, that trash amount is as great as it is, but, um, Chip, I want to touch on the rest on the website a lot, but they have a page down south, maybe, just a reminder for folks who, who do smoke that, um, proper disposal would be great. I'd also like to, um, thank, um, Matt Mulhern for his efforts and Bobby Cross from the town for the nine, nine eleven, um, ceremony that was held at the park on, uh, Saturday. Um, it was very well received. It was an excellent ceremony, I thought. And, um, thank Matt for taking the initiative to name that. Received a number of, um, good comments about the event and people thanking us for, for recognizing the twentieth anniversary. So. Um, Dom, we'll move to you. Like, school construction and others?
Man, there's a couple of, like, you got the pool project is going swimming pool.
You've been waiting like all year.
They, uh, were, you know, we, as you recall, we had, um, a two-hundred thousand, you know, one ninety gap that had remained constant. We're still trying to pick up, hand some ground on that. It's not growing due to construction costs. But, um, it looks like we're going to be down the wire on opening next spring. Um, so, um, hopefully, um, May fifteenth.
Go ahead.
It'll be done and then doing some testing and trying to be able to go live June first. And that's everybody's position.
So what will winter construction look like?
Not much. Um, that's one of the ways that we're, we've got a bit of a tension between trying to hold the budget line and also, um, not slip on the schedule. And so we've had some good bidding results come in on some of the trades and we're going to try to use that maybe to pay for some winter conditions. So.
And the weather, weather's been very complimentary to the process.
You know, overall, things are going very well. It's a good team to work all together. Suddenly at, at the police station, um, that project, um, we're, we're down to signage and, um, but, um, still talking about it. We can move it in later this month. We spent some time, uh, you know, either as part of or in advance of our, uh, goal-setting session, getting into some of these projects that we've been a part of, you know, from the Greg Brown Lodge, Police Station, Congress in Maine. It's worth getting into some of those, you know, I mean, the council's done the hard work of making them happen. You gotta spend some time seeing what's coming in on the backend. So we're working on trying to set some of that up. The, and then lastly, um, we're working with, uh, O'Rourke Marketing. We had a great opportunity. We've been talking about a video for seven years. Uh, so, um, working with, um, you know, the O'Rourke media group to put together, uh, three different, um, videos, a two-minute promotional on, uh, St. Albans, uh, experience, the package, the, the, the theme of good job for local neighborhoods to store downtown, um, and then smaller spots specifically on business recruitment and um, the redevelopment story. And once those are in play, we can use some of that to drive some, um, social media traffic and all of those folks that, um, pick up on the websites that you're surfing, we can use some of that to have promotional items for St. Albans show up. So, we've, um, we've flipped the mayor in and we're, we'll have, um, before we get to the final stage, we'll get to, get to see what we have in mind. But we're going to be filming this Friday. Hopefully the weather cooperates.
Thank you for adding the promotional video. I think that's going to be key, especially to the downtown.
I think so, yeah, it could be good.
Can you give us an update on, uh, Kingman Street? Is paving happening?
Yeah, pass that, sure.
First coat of paint today, a little bit of more work on that tomorrow. Uh, the second coat will go in about a month from now. But in the meantime, they're going to start installing all the new granite curbs this week. Then they'll move on to, um, pouring sidewalk, which will have to be piecemeal, section by section, so that we can still get everyone into the businesses. Um, and then, you know, October, second coat of paint is going to go down. Then it's going to start looking like a real street. Uh, it'll be streetlights and trees and banners and the little stuff. And, um, I can't say exactly when it will be open for regular traffic and then for parking, uh, but still, still looking at November for that to happen, if not sooner.
And, and the sidewalk had sort of the brick accessories as well?
Yeah, that's the, you know, that's been the whole point. It's going to look just as nice as our signature streetscape look everywhere else. The bricks, the banners, the wonderful flowers that Kelly and Keith Wakefield are doing. You know, if you go out to Kingman Street, um, tomorrow, you're going to be able to see, uh, how much wider the sidewalks are because now we have the street asphalt and they have it staked out where the curbs are going to go. And especially on the Nellies and Tetra side, you can really see how that sidewalk is nearly doubling width and, um, it'll be a lot nicer.
And our businesses are holding on?
Yeah, they're holding on. And they're very well supported by the community.
So second coat is last coat?
Uh, it's going to be last coat for this year.
Okay.
In May of next year, when the temperatures are perfect, we're going to put on the final coat, the final line striping. And we're not going to be dealing with any of that. Some issues we've chased with other projects, we would try to do the final stuff when it's too cold.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Chip. Dom, anything else going on? We're going to move on to council reports.
Same, sir.
Word one's good, no complaints from anybody yet this time now. Other than noise. That's why you say that already.
On Mike?
Um, just wanted to put in another plug for, uh, Nick Cherick and, um, the Western Terrestrials are going to be bringing, uh, this outdoor, uh, movie showing a Vermont independent movie called The Ballad of Ethan Alien on, uh, Thursday, the twenty-third in Taylor Park. Um, Dominic, I wanted to ask, uh, for the Congress in Maine and the Maidenland Apartments complex, I had a constituent who's got a family member who lives in, in one of the apartment buildings, who, um, has a parking pass, but parked on the CCB building side and was reprimanded by a CCB employee. And it was my understanding that if you have a pass, you can park anywhere in the complex. And so I don't know if that's just a misunderstanding of CCB folks or if I didn't understand that. But that surprised me to hear that they were told that by a CCB, someone representing CCB about parking on that side. So just wanted to flag that. And, um, I also wanted to mention that, um, regardless of, you know, whatever your political affiliations are, that, um, all of the major parties every two years reorganize in Vermont. And so, um, the town and, and city caucuses are happening over the next couple of weeks. Um, so, um, I think those are, um, Democrats, Republicans, and progressives are all holding those reorganizations. And sometimes those are kind of sleepy affairs, but I think every party is trying to get more people aware that that, that's what happens every two years under Vermont law. So, um, if you are interested in getting involved in, in party politics of any stripe, those are going to be happening over the next couple of weeks. And, um, I think all of them have been posted at this point.
Anything else? That's it for you?
Can I just name one? I, I forgot one. Uh, don't forget word one, folks. Um, this Saturday is the big party up at, uh, Hardak. So if you're going up Congress Street between twelve and eight o'clock at night, that's going to be a tough way to go. So try to avoid that area.
So just to specify a little bit more, that's the Afterglow event.
Yeah.
Which is being put on to, um, partly raise funds for suicide awareness and other activities. So.
We talk in grateful debt proportions or?
Uh, no, but, um, you know, for, you know, for that area, which is a tough road anyway, uh, on and off with one oh four, um, oh, sorry, one oh five. So, um, let's, uh, just be careful what I'm there. It's like, expect some delays.
Just to dovetail off that, um, UVM was a town last weekend for, for a cross-country meetup at Hardak. I don't know if that was a dual meet or a tri-meet, but, um, Aldis Hill and Hardak got good exposure. I would also add that Aldis Hill received a, um, war rec, uh, recreation grant, governor's recreation grant for eighteen thousand in conjunction with another eighteen we have. So we'll be investing thirty-six thousand into the trails up on Aldis Hill.
Trail look really nice.
Hopefully we're going to hit a chunk of it this year and maybe hit the other bit in the spring. But there's about thirty-six thousand that will be invested in the trails. So. Also looking for a brand administrator, if anyone knows, anyone that'd like to volunteer to do that? Uh, Bob, what do you have?
Just, I've gotten a number of calls from constituents about noise, like, of ordinary things like, when is my street going to be paved or why, why do we paint these crosswalks? And every time I call Marty Vanahan, he gets right back to me with a good answer and I'm related to the constituent. So I just want to thank Marty for, for doing this.
I would agree with that. Marty's very responsive and, um, I think we address a lot of issues as they pop up. Anything else? Anyone? Okay, we're moving on to item number fifteen. I have one, one of the visuals.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh.
I forgot one, one quick thing. Um, I think a lot of people have really been enjoying the disc golf, uh, course that Valmore Garibay and Pastor Preston Fuller and other folks, uh, worked really hard on. Um, they are having the first, uh, I think, kind of organized tournament of, for disc golf, um, on the twenty-fifth. September twenty-fifth.
Chip, I know we're already, the Halloween activities downtown will be on the thirtieth.
Yeah, spooky Saturday. We'll have the trick-or-treating, uh, in, uh, conjunction with the farmer's market. Uh, so trick-or-treating will probably be from noon to two. And, uh, uh, farmer's market is also trying to get involved in a, uh, pumpkin carving contest, uh, with actual kids' safe carving on-site this year in the park. Uh, so there should be more out about that. And Tony Connor will be setting his horrifying animatronics up in City Hall this year. Uh, he's got grand plans about turning this into a haunted house for a day. Yeah, so it'll be a little bit back to normal, uh, for spooky Saturday.
Thanks, Chip. Consider the approval warrant eight thirty-one twenty-one?
Motion to approve warrant eight thirty-one twenty-one, second.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Mike. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes to approve warrant.
Motion to approve minutes eight, nine, twenty-one, second.
Motion to approve minutes from eight, nine, twenty-one, seconded by Mike. Any other comments, questions, evidence? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion to approve.
Minutes passed and motion to adjourn by Tim. Third second. No, we're not going to say no. Uh, motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you for people attending.
You know, we got a lot on the behalf of council for maybe.